Should be live.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, staff have no agenda changes to present this evening.
Second item is public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda? Seeing no movement from the audience, we'll close the public forum and move on and ask for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda, I would make a motion be approved as submitted.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're gonna move into new business right away. And the first item is a presentation of the 2020 financial audit from Knutson Monroe, and I believe Amy is here. Welcome to the podium, Amy. And give us your spiel on how these guys are doing.
They did a great job. Hopefully, everybody has seen a copy of the audit report, whether it's electronic or a bound copy. We do prepare your financial statements in accordance with the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, which is an other basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles. So basically, on page two, the second paragraph says, "In our opinion, the financial statements presents fairly in all material respects the aggregate cash and unencumbered cash balance of the city as of December 31, 2020, and the aggregate receipts and expenditures for the year then ended in accordance with the financial reporting provisions of the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide." That is described in more detail in note one to the financial statement. The financial statement itself, presented on page three, begins with the prior year unencumbered cash balances detailed by fund. Total reporting entity of $4,330,000, just under. There was a correction in a prior year encumbrance, so that shows in there is a cancellation of the encumbrance of $37,000. Receipts in the current year of $7.5 million. Expenditures of $7.9 million in the current year leaves you with ending unencumbered cash balance at December 31 of 2020 of just over $4 million. If you add back the encumbrances and accounts payable of $77,000, you end up with your ending cash balance at December 31 of $4,101,751. The notes to the financial statement are an integral part of the statement. They start on page four with the summary of significant accounting policies. There are no significant changes within those notes. But I would point out that at the bottom of page four and onto the top of page five, it does discuss the regulatory basis of accounting under the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. The notes continue on, on page six. Note number two, I would point out that the city was not in compliance with KSA 9D-1402 and 9D-1405, which require that deposits with statutorily authorized financial institutions be adequately secured. There was a period of 11 days during January that it was in excess of depository pledges as well as the FDIC insurance. The other item that's noted underneath there relates to a budget violation. We do not consider the closing of the Recreation Fund. That Recreation Fund cash got closed into the Recreation Fund, and then that fund was closed into the Park Fund and the General Fund. And because of that, there was about $70,000 that technically shows as being over budget. But since that fund was closed, it's not technically a violation. The notes do continue on. Deposits and investments at the top of page seven. We do note that at December 31, 2020, the carrying amount of the city's deposits was that $4,101,751. The bank balance was actually $4,251,163. All of that was covered either by depository securities or the FDIC insurance. Note four presents the long-term debt. As you are probably well aware, at the end of December, there was $2,274,000 in outstanding debt. 2.14 million of that relates to your general obligation bonds. The other relates to KDHE loans. The notes continue on and on. Page 10 presents the inter-fund transfers. These are also detailed in the supplementary schedules after the notes to the financial statement, and it gives you the regulatory authority under which those transfers were made. We did have a little change to the risk management note based upon the fact that you are now participating in the Kansas County Association Multi Line Pool, or K-CAM. That is a public entity risk pool and not commercial insurance. And therefore, we had to expand that note to explain that you are now utilizing those services for insurance. Going on to yay, the last page of the notes, on page 11. Of course, everybody knows about the coronavirus pandemic. We have a note included in there. Also included in that note is the fact that the city received coronavirus relief funds in the amount of $250,352 during 2020. Those were reimbursements of expenses that were required to be substantiated in order to get those funds reimbursed through the county. The other subsequent event note that I would point out that you are all well aware of is the really, really cold weather that the state of Kansas incurred during February. That, of course, caused the cost of natural gas to spike, and the city subsequently received a bill of approximately $2.1 million for gas for that very short time period. In order to pay this bill, the city borrowed $2 million from the state of Kansas under their newly established City Utility Low Interest Loan Program, which has a current rate of 1/4 of a percent. That is adjusted annually. The rest of the financial statements include the regulatory required supplementary information. Summary of expenditures, actual versus budget appears on page 12. That is probably the easiest place where you can see the variance in the Recreation Fund, closing that out. And it was actually then shows as being over, but we consider that not a statutory violation. And then it goes into the various funds after that. I don't really feel compelled to go through all of those unless anybody has a question. We do also have the letter that everybody would have received with a copy of the audit report. It is our communication letter with governance. There was no significant difficulties in dealing with management in completing the audit. There was one journal entry that we were required to note as being material in the letter, and that related to the reimbursement under of those CARES funds. They were previously credited back against the expenditure line items where the expenditures had been incurred, and those actually have to be recorded as revenue and then showing the actual expenditures. So that was that $250,232. Any questions?
The question I would have is, this is a 2020 audit.
Correct.
And yet you're reporting a 2021 event of February when the implement weather hit.
That is considered a subsequent event.
But it's, wouldn't that show up in 2021 audit?
The, the actual expenditures and everything will. Anything that is of major import, I guess that you would say, to the city itself, we typically go ahead and show in the notes as a subsequent event. Getting a $2.1 million invoice for gas consumption is a little bit material to the city. And that's one of the reasons why it's included in there, so. Any other questions? You betcha. It'll put you to sleep every time.
Thanks for presenting on this for us.
Absolutely.
I know you guys have been doing our audits for a number of years, and we certainly appreciate your thoroughness.
Thank you.
We want to make sure Ethan's doing everything right.
Ethan is doing a fabulous job.
We don't want him to go to jail.
What did that cost?
His staff that he has underneath him has also done a fabulous job, so. Yes, the city has definitely a good finance group in place.
Well, this is no, this is no small task, and there's so many intricate parts and pieces to this. And it's, you're from, this is exactly what you do, and it's just very rewarding for them to hear the accolades that they're doing a very good job. So thank you, staff.
If there are no other questions, I'd make a motion to accept and approve the 2020 fiscal audit as presented.
Second.
Heard the motion and the second to approve the audit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries. Thanks again, Amy.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your evening.
You too. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's consideration of replat of Cedar Meadows Second Preliminary Powers Platte. Ethan will bring us up to par with what's going on there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet, you have, we'll start the discussion this evening on this agenda item. I believe Mr. Weber is here to talk. He's the majority property owner of the Stutzman Circle in Cedar Meadows Second area that's being replatted or having an amendment done. Originally, the, the plat, and you can tell the, it's a much bigger map because it, I'm sure messed with your packet and how that looks electronically, called for Stutzman Circle to be ended in a cul-de-sac. And the far north property line on that map would have been the edge of the property that the powers owned, that the city subsequently purchased. And so, you know, many of the discussions of the city acquiring is that there was potential for additional residential lots, maybe along both the Main Street and Stutzman Circle if they were to be extended. And so, Mr. Weber is here with, and you can see that plat change. As it's a formally accepted plat, essentially, all the council will be doing tonight is reaffirming those public rights and dedications, which slightly changed as far as where the street was on the original plat versus where it will be in the amendment. But I will let Alan come and talk a little bit more about the changes. They are requesting on that plat specifically Stutzman.
Is this change represented here, or is this how it sits now, Ethan?
How it sits now was on page 64 of the packet, and then the replat of Cedar Meadows was page 65. And then I think the one map you have is actually Powers', which won't show Stutzman. That would be how it would be if it extended.
Okay, well, I've got the end of Stutzman Circle here.
Yeah, so right now, as is, that street doesn't technically exist.
Correct.
On the current plat, so.
But instead of the original plat where it's a cul-de-sac, it's now designed to go straight through?
Yeah, well.
Or sort of straight through.
Yeah, it's intended to go a little bit further to serve residential lots that would be on the Powers' plat. And then it's still cul-de-sacs.
Right. There's a cul-de-sac up the north.
It just extends it, you know, another 100 feet.
The primary reason I ask that is the way this is drawn here, the north side of Stutzman Circle would indicate that that property is in that 100-year floodplain.
Yeah, there's a portion.
There's, there's the top of the new plat right there.
Just so I understand, that's what we're looking at.
Yep, yep.
Hi, Alan.
Hello.
What would you like to tell the council tonight?
Well, we're just looking to, like Ethan was saying, to go ahead and move forward with the replating of Cedar Meadows Second Edition with changing the lot sizes along Stutzman Street. The streets on Main Street will still say, stay all the same. It does dead-end at the north end of the property now instead of having a cul-de-sac down there. The lots have all been shrank down in size for us to put in zero-entry patio homes. And on the, well, it's on the east side of the street, on the west side of the street, we're going to do twin homes on the other side. So the lots just needed to be smaller to make all that put together. As far as the Powers project marrying up to it, there's going to be possibly two lots on Main Street and possibly three lots on Stutzman. I don't know if, I don't think that it shows that way on Harland's preliminary, though.
No, just the two on Stutzman.
Just the two, yeah.
Lots three and four? Yeah.
So we're asking for approval to move on with Cedar Meadows Second Edition.
The only, the only concern I had, and I've talked to Alan a little bit about this, and I don't think it would reflect any changes on Cedar Meadows Second. But I think there's been some conversation with Harland about doing some correcting over here on the Powers' property, and there's not been any answer back or any action taken. But if you look at the frontages, right here into those two lots, to the left of the P on that one design, frontage of those properties is 50 foot, .14 inches, and 57 feet, .82 inches. And the question was asked of Harland, why couldn't the circle be taken? Not, not changing, you know, particularly the lots, but take the circle to the edge of the floodplain, which would extend that frontage property and make lots three and four legal front properties? I believe 65-foot minimum frontage is by code in Hallstead. But somebody needs to talk to Harland, and maybe you know a reason why it's not done?
I honestly don't.
Okay, okay.
It may just be something he didn't even think of.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a matter of fill that's needed in there, it'd be well worth it to bring those two lots in compliance before we say we're going to approve the Powers' property. But, and I don't see in any way that it affects the, I keep trying to call it redbud, the Cedar Meadows Edition. I don't think it'll affect any changes. But before we go forward on the Powers', that needs to be.
Wonder, does it have something to do with hydraulic flow that? I think that's probably the only reason they're looking at the natural hydraulic flow of that body of water there.
I'll have to visit with Harland. We had just got it, got it circled. And, and the Powers' plat is more on here to get those kind of comments to take back because the Powers' plat hasn't been through any of the planning and zoning process where the Cedar Meadow Second is actually platted and finalized, and this would be an amendment, what they're asking to do. So we, we can visit with that, but yeah, I know there is some concern because of how close the floodplain is to an actual floodway of how much fill we're gonna get, be able to get in there under a floodplain fill permit without.
I'm thinking there's restrictions on that.
Well, it would have to go to the state or engineers, whatever.
I think that's what that's about.
But, well, I guess what I'm getting at, I think we could probably, I don't think there's any reason not to. I think we could do approval of the Cedar Meadows Second Edition, but exclude the Powers' plat from the motion for approval. That's what I'm getting at.
As I say, tonight, we were not asking for any sort of motion on Powers'. You guys won't take any action on that formally as a council until the Planning Commission actually goes through and does their process on that plat. It's interesting because we are the landowner that basically, this is the only way that I can effectively, without a work session, but we're trying to get this done in a time and manner to get what has been drawn up for the Powers' property for you all to say, Ethan, we think this is way off base. Tell Harland we want X. Or no, this is kind of in line with what we were thinking. And then we can direct Harland there so we can get it at a point where we know that you all are satisfied to start taking it through the Planning Commission, who then go through and make sure the lots are the appropriate size.
Well, I'm okay with the Powers the way it is if we extend it out to make those legitimate or conforming lot frontages.
One question, is there, lot five is showing at 1.35 acres. Is there a reason why it is so much larger than the other four?
That lot, because it was off 10th Street and we had not, I mean, when we purchased it, we didn't really talk about whether the city has any use. The easiest was to leave it a larger lot that can either be divided again later or cleared as is for, you know, existing. So we pretty much had Harland make that lot squared up to the other property lines as much as possible and then get it out of the floodplain, so we don't have to worry about that as far as a development issue. But you could, the city could ask for it to be divided smaller. This was just kind of leaving it as the largest parcel possible in order to either let a future buyer make it smaller or do what they want, you know, develop to choice. Because right now, yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna shoehorn into, you know, four residential lots if somebody would come and say, hey, I want to do X there, and the city might find that a better use. And then I will note on the Powers', basically, the park reserve encompasses the floodplay, floodplain and floodway, which should not affect plans for the park. I mean, we'll have some permitting to do for certain improvements that we would do, but in a large part, it keeps an area that would, under regulations, be green spaces, green space, and then the city can move forward with the, the natural park plan.
Do we need to make a motion to proceed with the replat of Cedar Meadows Two? Or just a recommendation?
I believe, and Brad can correct me if I'm off base here, but you would just want a motion that basically accepts the easement and public right-of-way dedications on the Cedar Meadow Second Amendment or amended plat. Because you're essentially, many years ago, a council said, we understand that this is where Stutzman Circle is, and we agree that the city is taking that as a public right-of-way. Well, now, in theory, we actually narrowed it a little bit because you don't have that big cul-de-sac there anymore. So you're kind of taking actually less, a little bit less of a street right-of-way than originally was on the plat. But there's still easements, and you're still saying that you understand that that's gonna be a public road and add that to.
If there's no other questions, I'd make a motion to accept updated public easement and right-of-way dedication for the replat of Cedar Meadows Two and specifically Stutzman Circle Street.
Second.
Got the motion and the second to approve these changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Is there gonna be buildings started tomorrow on that?
How's lumber prices gonna play in that? All right, next item under new business. You need something else?
Before we move on, I just was gonna make sure that no other council or yourself had any, any other questions or comments or suggestions regarding kind of what Harland has laid out there for the, the Powers' plat?
At this time, I don't. Ethan, I'm gonna wait for the final draft of the plat and with Cedar Meadows and Stutzman Circle together and then look at it. Anybody else?
Any recommendations need to be put out there so Harland can take that into consideration before he comes back with?
There's nothing that jumps out at me right now.
Frontage footage.
Yeah, and that was a good point.
Yeah, I think, I think Sam's point's valid and.
Yeah, we need to try to keep this frontage footage, especially those are gonna be new homes. We're gonna want standard lots down there.
I will point out, because it's, the drainage reserve has to do, it's not necessarily because it's needed. It's just there is a very odd sized and not usable strip of land between what is needed for a Main Street extension and where the back property lines are on some properties along the west. And so, calling it a reserve left that as open as possible for the city to either keep that as part of maintenance, you know, and it just be a grassy area next to Main Street, or, or we have some other options that we can discuss at a later time. But that's not, for lack of a better term, is one of the reasons we just called it a drainage reserve since it does a butt the slue there a little bit, but it's not like there's specific drainage plans for that area. So just wanted to make mention of that. And you can see, I did have him reflect a six-foot wide sidewalk on the west side of Main Street, just so you guys could get an idea there as well. But I think this gets us the most usable, usable, developable land that the city could market to help offset the costs that we incurred when we purchased the Powers' property. And then also, like with lot five, to Councilmember Campbell's comment, gives freedom to anyone who might potentially be interested in it later to have options with what they do, so.
Pretty good. Sounds good. Any other questions, council? Hey, we'll move on to the next item. We have consideration of patrol car camera system. Looks like we have a couple of representatives from our local PD here. We get to hear from you tonight, Matt? Like how Josh passed the buck there.
I'm here if there's any other questions.
Good evening, mayor and council. What you have in your packet there is two estimates for in-car camera systems that also include body cameras. We currently run the Axon body cameras, which is what we've been running for a few years now. This project would allow us to have a dash camera, the standard forward-facing out of the car, as well as an in-car camera in the transport area, as well as a body camera still. It would be on the watch guard system, which allows all three cameras to talk to each other. So an activation of any kind records all three cameras simultaneously and one audio bit simultaneously with the video. The main reason for the watch guard is we are more fond of that company and the equipment. It's ran by almost every other agency in the county, so there's familiarity there. It's easy to work with other places, with the county attorney's office, with evidentiary items of video. I will note on the funding of it, the plan would be to fund it with our VIN account as well as asset forfeiture. So no taxpayer money out of the budget. Are there any questions about these?
Are you planning on installing this three-camera system in, in every vehicle then that we have out there?
Ultimately, that is the end goal, to have it in every vehicle. Right now, we have it in one vehicle. This would add two more systems to the vehicles. And then the final vehicle, when it gets replaced, we'll get a system then, but it's got extended time.
For people that may not understand, you're looking to standardize to a brand that the county uses. So when you guys turn over these electronic files, they already have the software on hand to disseminate that information, look at those videos, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And when the county decides to change their system, they'll have a lot of good used equipment that we can get at really good prices if we.
It would depend how old it is. The life. It would depend how old it is, the life expectancy on this is about 15 years per system. We would be looking to get two-vehicle cycles out of each one, so 12 years, absent some other catastrophic failure of a system.
You said when, when they're activated, all three cameras, the one that you carry, the two in the car are all live.
Yes.
What activates them? Do you push a button to activate, or is it?
It can be activated by the push of a button on the body camera in the car. It's activated anytime the lights are turned on, on the vehicle, so in any way, it turns on. Another crash sensors, and I was gonna, another advantage with the watch guard, it offers record after the fact, so we can go back several days. Even if there was no activation made, we can go back and it stores video for a few days on the hard drive that we can then pull for any evidentiary reason.
I'm gonna pick on you again for a minute because I know you are a canine handler. Are we planning on putting a camera on Eddie?
There's not, there's not one on him, that one would be in the front. The in-car camera is intended to record transports of anyone, so that one would be in front where people would have to ride. In the other vehicles that are equipped with a prisoner transport area, that's where the camera would be to record them in there.
And I assume when you're working him, that if he does go hot on a scent, that that's gonna be recorded off of your body camera anyway?
The body camera, as well as a wide view from the front of the car that lets you see where patrol vehicle's facing.
Currently, it says the pays Axon approximately $2,200 annually for equipment and video storage. Upgrading to this new system, that $2,200 will then go to $19,234 annually.
Correct, correct.
And is that $19,234 also paid out of the VIN account?
Does that come out of our VIN account? That's a question that Josh is gonna have to answer.
The $19,000 is actually, if we went with the Axon system, not gonna go with that. Upon approval, we wouldn't go with that system. It's actually, that would be what it would cost us to go to the Axon body cameras and dash cameras versus watch guards. So we will get rid of the Axon bill.
Okay.
By going to watch guard.
Okay, okay.
And then it will be stored here on site with a dedicated server through Gilmore, which gives us actually more security than what we currently have now.
So, so you're going to two watch guards, so still, will that $19,234 be paid out of the VIN account or out of your budget?
Is the $19,000 the Axon?
No, that's, that's, right, no, the other, the, the.
$15,000. That's, yes, that's the part that's coming out of VIN.
Oh, I see what's going on, okay, thank you.
I will note, the other reason why we're looking at the switch now is we had to sign a five-year contract with Axon. That's up this year, so this is an opportunity for us to make the switch at the end of our contract instead of signing another and then having two systems to try and navigate through. So the timing is right for us to make that switch.
So the watch guard will be an add, will actually be a savings to the city of Halsted then?
Right, right.
And you feel like in today's world, you need equipment like that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, with today's climate, it only makes sense that, eight years ago, when we went to Axon, the body cameras were sufficient, but with all the changes happening, it's only gonna benefit, I mean, the officers, the city as a whole. If we do have those instances where we do have complaints, issues come up, and then for court purposes, Brad can attest to the, how vital that three-camera system can be for like DUIs and stuff like that. It's very, it'll be beneficial for everyone involved.
Have we had some substantial forfeiture?
No.
Do we have forfeiture that we hadn't done anything with?
Yeah, over the last, probably, we haven't spent any for, I think, three years or so. And so we've built up about, I think, $3,200 to $3,500 in the forfeiture account. We have a couple of things we still have to liquidate.
Why don't we liquidate them?
Do what?
Why aren't they liquidated?
Well, we're waiting for Purple Wave to come and take pictures and get it posted.
So it's in process?
Yes.
Okay. This new camera system you're looking at, it's a Motorola product?
Yeah, they've gone in single Motorola.
Well, Motorola's certainly been around a long time, so. I don't think I have any more questions, council.
If there aren't any more questions, I'd make a motion to approve the watch guard camera project for an amount not to exceed $15,000, an authorization for chief of police to sign documentation related to the project.
Should, should, should it not be included in that motion that is to be paid for by VIN and forfeiture?
Amount of not to exceed $15,000 to be paid out of the VIN account and the forfeiture account.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the patrol car camera system, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, and that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Next item on our agenda is discussion of 2022 budget timeline. I know this is going to Ethan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you have on page 73 of your packet, basically, two timelines. You'll see that this looks a little different for you, those of you that have, and I think all of you, hopefully, remember our timeline last year with the passage of Senate Bill 13 and the corresponding House bill. Essentially, we talked about this a little bit at a previous council meeting, establishes this concept of the revenue neutral rate. So kind of like the tax lid of old, which has now been done away with. The city still has a deadline that we must communicate with Harvey County on whether we plan to exceed this revenue neutral rate. If we would not exceed that rate, then you can see the timeline still kinda has that August 25th, which is the state's deadline, and you can see there, basically, to keep it in line with our regular council meetings. At the July 26th council meeting, you guys would actually give authority to publish budgets, so we'd have our budget work sessions all prior to that date, get that notice, and then on August 9th, hold the budget public hearing and adopt the budget to get it certified to the county clerk. The bottom schedule shows if we do, would opt to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then we must notify the county by July 20th that that's going to happen. We would still plan to have a budget work session, at least one, before that date, but then it would still do another one. And then after that, it just kinda gets in, especially because they made it effective this year, but with all the timelines, there's a little bit different regulations than in subsequent years. The earliest date we could hold the revenue neutral public hearing would be August 20th. And then you all would have to set that public hearing date. You can, you do not have to, but you can set the revenue neutral public hearing and your budget public hearing to happen on the same date, but you do have to have two separate public hearings. But you can see, the timeline takes us almost to October 1st under state deadlines with the revenue neutral, and if we're gonna exceed that. Again, that revenue neutral rate relates to the city's valuation and the established mill levy. Essentially, this year, our preliminary numbers indicate the valuation for the city has gone up. And so our revenue neutral rate would say we were at 74 and a half mills last year, so we cannot do more than 72.3, because as the, as every, the essential is if you are assessing a certain amount of property tax income, then that, you know, million that we assessed last year, that's the same amount in order to keep our revenue neutral rate. And since your mill is worth more, you would assess less mills to get that same amount of money. There are some caveats in this state law that I think makes it advantageous, especially in this first year, for us to consider, at least, I don't know that it means we're gonna make the mill levy, you know, or exceed grossly what we have before. But the big issue comes in is that we're still dealing with estimates, and if we would say we're not going to have a revenue neutral rate hearing, and then say our final valuation, and after the county's had more time to look, and appeals on property valuations and stuff have gone through, and we set the budget at what the county had told us was our revenue neutral rate, and we lose $100,000 from valuation, and suddenly the city goes over that, then we actually owe property tax refunds because we didn't go through this revenue neutral process. And so it's really, and kind of a way to make sure we're not potentially violating this new law, even by virtue of, of a mathematical equation, that we probably should opt to plan to say that we're gonna possibly exceed the revenue neutral rate and go with that timeline. Again, that doesn't mean the budget's going up substantially, it's just everyone really nervous, and I know the county's probably not eager to try and figure out this refund provision if we wouldn't go through the revenue neutral process. So, that being said, we are about to the point of these preliminary budget work sessions, and as the memo said, hopefully, you all start looking at your schedules, and next meeting, we'll come and ask for those work sessions to be, to be started. But this is just so you guys can see kind of how Senate Bill 13 has changed the timeline. The other advantage of the revenue neutral, or the potential of exceeding the revenue neutral rate and taking that timeline and plan is it actually gives us a little more time to get better data from what we're seeing this actual year to inform the 2022 budget. You know, we've always joked that, basically, because of how budget cycles run, you know, we're trying to crystal ball 18, 19 months in the future. This way, you can see, you know, we'd be in September, we'd almost have three quarters of the year in actuels to help inform and understand what we would be transitioning from 21 to 22 with. So gives us a little more time to get more financial data to better inform where the old timeline, if you will, we're, we're trying to figure out in July where every fund is gonna end up in December. And sometimes, we guess more accurately than others, depending on how the last quarter shakes out, so.
In simple terms, would you explain revenue neutral and what it means?
Yeah, so, these are just broad numbers, these aren't the exact for the city, that would be from the budget. But the city assesses a certain amount of mills for every fund that's tax-funded. So say the city said, from all of our taxing funds, we need a million dollars in property tax money to be generated in order to make our budget work. Revenue neutral says that that a million now becomes your, your ceiling. And if the city wants to, before, we used to, if the city went up in valuation, you could keep the mill levy flat, and you'd still get that valuation increase for, you know, appreciation of properties or new improvements. And we, even though, if your property, unless the residence property had actually increased, they would have seen no increase in their property taxes from taxes staying, the mill rate staying level. Now with that ceiling, basically, if the valuation goes up, then where you used to, that was 75 mills one year, the next year, that might, million dollars still might be generated, but it only takes 73 mills. So if the city comes and says, we need more, we need a million dollars and one penny to make our budget work this year, you have to do all this in, in order to be more transparent. Essentially, I mean, the thought behind the law is you're not giving people an accurate picture of property taxes when you talk mill rates because the mill is still adjusted by what their personal property is doing and, and so on. So the, the issue that concerns me, and I know it's one of the points of the league, and I think Brad, even on the legal side, is because of the refund provision, if we don't go through this process, there's still a chance mathematically, depending, because we don't, what we set the budget on is still a guess of valuation, and we don't get that final number till November. If we, if the city ever exceeds that revenue neutral rate without doing these proper things, then you have to go back and refund property taxes to every single property in your city. And so it's kind of a belt and suspenders of, you might as well go through the process just to make sure you have that coverage.
So in reality, the second option is really the better way for us to go, because otherwise, we could be dealing with a refund of.
What was wrong with the old way?
Nobody liked it either. Can't say that this is an improvement, candidly, I mean, it's.
So are you bouncing some of this off of Newton and Monroe and other municipalities?
Yeah, I mean, we're all looking, and it's kind of one of those of, you know, I don't know that it will be, but until, it's one of those, kind of like when they first pass the tax lid and then they go back and kind of revisit. I think I would be surprised if we don't see a few modifications after this first year because you've got cities trying to comply, and then the counties are also. Because basically, when we say we're gonna exceed the revenue neutral rate by July 20th, we have to give the county a pretty good idea, and then they actually mail out notices to everyone of when the, when the hearing is, actually what any property tax increase is going to do to your property. So it is, it is a good movement there, I guess, for transparency. But, yeah, there's still a lot of moving parts, and everyone's trying to figure out how to comply with this, and it's, it's a new, a new, a new year.
When do we need to have that meeting in July, by?
Early, like the first or second week.
With vacations and everything else happening, July 4th won't be on the calendar anymore. It should just be a day off, that thing. But wouldn't it be a good idea to go ahead and try to set a date to this evening?
We can, if, if you guys all know, I would say the week of July 5th or July 12th is really when you want.
Say, say again, Ethan?
The week of July 5th or the week of July 12th, and I would, I would opt for the 5th.
Just to give you enough time.
Because then we still have a council meeting and whatnot the week of the 12th, so.
So you would opt for the week of the 5th? So Wednesday, the 7th, maybe? Was a good day for you.
It depends on whether or not we finally switch to, usually my Wednesday night commitments, usually I have commitments on Wednesday night. But I don't know.
Would be better?
No, because we may switch to Wednesday, Thursday. We've been talking about it for a month, and we have yet to do it.
Well, we send it for the 7th, and then adjust if we need to. That work?
Say we can, we can revisit on the 28th.
What'd you say?
I mean, Tuesday, the 6th, if that works for Denise.
That'll work for me. I'd be better.
Better than Wednesday? Yeah, Tuesday's fine.
Better than Monday, one of us will still be at the lake.
I don't plan on being anywhere near here on Monday.
Okay, Tuesday, the 6th, July.
Just, somebody will make a motion to that effect, I assume at 6?
I would make a motion to hold a discussion of the budget timeline for Tuesday, on Tuesday, the 6th of July, at 6:00 PM.
At, okay, 6:00 PM.
Yep.
At adequate?
Second.
Have the motion and the second, this'll be a work session, Ethan?
Yeah.
To establish a date for a work session of Tuesday, July 6th, at 6:00 PM, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that carries unanimously, and Carlos, I'd ask that you send an email reminder to myself and the entire council of that.
I will have to ask.
Ethan. I get it.
Do we need to give consideration to other items during that work session?
We can add to that.
It's going to be pretty time-consuming.
It will probably be at preliminary budget review, so that'll probably be 90% of anything we talk about.
Go and add to it.
But we can revisit that on the 28th, too.
Okay.
Steak and lobster.
Out of Brad's fun.
I was thinking that, too.
Okay, that's gonna finish up our new business. Would you have an executive session scheduled this evening? And if Ethan's ready, I'd entertain the motion for that now. Thanks, Alan.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recesses into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 754319B2. And I ask that, in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. The open meeting and the governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 8:10 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries, we are in executive session. Pose same sign, that motion carries, we are in executive session.
You want to go back to the back, ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.